Welcome everyone to the Monday, May 23rd, 2011. Meeting of the Radford Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Just a quick agenda review. Tonight, we're going to be continuing our discussion of the kind of the generic part of the town plan. We've just talked about some of the meetings in the Hall lately. And what we're going to do with our presentation to the select board. And then we'll be reviewing the chapters Arts and Culture and Transportation. I'd like to welcome all the artsy people back, or the transporters people. And thanks for coming tonight. First order of business is to approve the minutes of May 9th, 2011 for their last meeting. Is there a motion? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say hi. The minutes are approved. Announcements, I've got a couple of things that I've crossed my desk. First one is that there's a Vermont Energy Plan update. It is scheduled for June 9th, Thursday, I believe. From 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock at the Riverside Middle School up in Springville. And Rod, you know much or anything about that particular?
No, I think I've seen the announcement and that's it.
Yeah, that was this meeting.
And this is to talk about the recent revised state on energy policy and all the things.
The draft?
Yeah. The draft. There were directives to revise the plan pretty quickly.
And so if people want to know more about this meeting, I mean, I have an email about it. If anybody, if everybody don't want to know?
They can get it.
Most likely to attend, I guess.
Did you get it from the other commission?
Uh, I think so, yeah.
I think the other commission is in half your capacity.
Yeah.
And I think that's where we try to issue to approach. Should I just send that to you guys?
Yes, great.
Send it out to the commission?
This is June 9th. Yeah, right.
Okay.
I'll go with that my last one, I think.
I'll forward it to you guys in a few weeks and yeah, everybody on the commission, that would be great. And to the Energy Committee too. And then the other announcement I have is that there's a VIT class on the 23rd of June. And that's about salvage yards. And regulating and all that stuff of salvage yards.
What's VIT?
Vermont Interactive TV, which is, there's a studio in a high school that's great. Was it salvage yard, did it say yard? Last name was a junkyard?
Sliding more market.
Better stuff.
Yeah. Things would be relatively risky.
Twenty-first century.
It's the
But I think they have some junkyards.
No, I'm joking.
With them with that dogs.
It's the new junkyard rule to stay.
Salvage yard, dog, Jesus.
That pure break.
Okay, so that's my turn now. Does anybody have any other announcements? Meetings or anything like that?
Just to remind you that there are three openings on the planning commission. Your term is expiring.
That's about 30 years.
Liz, your interim appointment is expiring. And then there is an opening to fill Dana's seat. So if you're very interested in re-upping, you can send a letter to the Town Manager's office. Or there's an application on there that you can fill out. And if you know anybody that's interested, you can direct them.
Alright, great. So that's a good one for our audience at home. And I don't know if, are there any meetings to announce for the commercial districts? Do you want to talk about that later?
We could announce it now and later if you want. There's a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, this Wednesday.
For Canal Street?
Canal Street. And it is being held at the hospital at 4:30 p.m. in Conference Room 1 at the hospital.
So this is one of the meetings that's kind of an issue of the commercial district meeting?
The whole audience is sort of a stakeholder group, so it's it's not, it's focusing on Canal Street. And it's hoped that people working and living in the neighborhood will attend.
But the invitation is to everybody.
The invitation's broader than that, but we've chosen the time and location in an effort to attract people.
And are there, is there a Puffin Road meeting scheduled and a West Brattleboro meeting scheduled?
Yeah.
Yep, those are Thursday, July 8th. West Brattleboro is going to be from noon to 1:30 at the Melrose Terrace Community Room in West Brattleboro. And then the Puffin Road meeting is going to be from 6:00, 8:00 that night at the Hampton Inn Boardroom.
Tell me again, West Brattleboro meeting?
Is it the Melrose Terrace, is that what it's called down? Melrose Terrace is a super housing complex in Mid-Community Room 7. It's on Melrose Terrace.
Why don't you get it, I think it's
If you're going to West Brattleboro?
Just give us a call. We'll get you there.
If you're going to West Brattleboro, there's an old concrete bridge, a narrow side road. Just before there's this big yard on the left. That's Melrose Terrace, you take it right there. You just go around.
Right. If you do miss it, there's also the creek.
Okay, so we're going to have those three meetings in the three, the three commercial districts that we're talking about. Is there, is there a downtown meeting?
No. We made the decision to target these three outer neighborhood, one of the town locations on the basis of the identification for the need for a master plan in downtown. So each one of these locations has a plan written for it. And the question is around the feasibility of that plan and its implementation steps. So there's a gateway plan for Canal Street Exit 1. There's the West Brattleboro Master Plan and there's the Puffin Road Master Plan. So it's a discussion focused to some extent on what can be done in the timeframe of the forthcoming town plan. A little further out, whereas the it's already been identified and agreed by, you know, the people who participated in previous meetings that there is a need for a master plan to downtown. And that being a key stakeholder there is also eager to settle a kind of master plan.
So that would be the main objective of action for the downtown portion is to undergo planning process.
I think the final report from the consultant will still deal with the issues associated with downtown. But the key issue there is doing a master plan. And then the kinds of topics that work for my Puffin Road Master Plan are the kinds of things that you see addressed to some extent. And at least the Canal Street Plan, I think this is explicit as you know, wayfinding signs, sign regulations, streetscape issues, ways in which the need for or the ability of design standards to bring about you know, the principal, you know, the sort of like the policies embodied in the plan. And that's true to some extent also following on from the first interim and then permanent zoning changes to what is now a rural commercial, West Brattleboro. So it's a little bit different in each one, but I think that the general view and the sort of efficiency factor is that we figured out that downtown definitely needs a master plan. And those are the sort of topics that would fill out a master plan.
Alright, so everybody that's involved in organizations in those areas will get noticed at the meeting. Okay, great, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Next thing is other business. Is there any other business that anybody? And then the next item is public comment. Now, this is public comment that's not necessarily related to the main topics tonight. So if anybody has anything like that, you're welcome to address that. Otherwise, if you would feel free to join in the discussion on the town plan topics, that would be great. Okay, anything? Okay. So let's just jump right in to the town plan. The first item under that list is meetings recently held and upcoming. We sort of just talked about some upcoming meetings.
Yeah, so the three upcoming kind of meetings, the new meetings. Last Friday, it's been a long time ago. Rod and I spoke to the community breakfast?
Citizens.
Citizens Breakfast, thank you.
That was Friday, yeah?
With an update of where we are with the town plan and some, Rod talked about the new market tax credit and the census tract that applies to. So that was another opportunity and you'll see some of the work that I did for that when we talked about this software presentation. Let's see, the Energy Committee met the Monday before our last meeting. And we'll meet again after we've had a chance to work through some of the issues.
Right, so we figured out a, it followed on from the night before's meeting where we resolved some issues for the template or format for each of the chapters. So we shared with the group the rearrangement of the chapter template. And we talked about moving from goals to policies and then actions. We made a commitment to ensure that we have access to the ECLI software, software that we have had access to for some time. And that would enable us to update the data. So we feel like we can develop meaningful baselines, which was one of the early issues for the working group to address. And from that, identifying goals. So Paul has to implement, has to sort of input new data, give us some trends or timeline based data. And where, I think Jim Bizino and Paul and I will have to get a couple of goals and then bring that back to the working group. But yeah, so it's pretty good.
So the ECLI stuff will be kind of part and parcel of the goals and everything?
Well, the thing that we were really working on making sure that we could do is if we were going to make anything like quantitative goals, that we will be able to use the software to track progress so that we could measure whether we're progressing towards the targets that we set.
And so that includes being able to establish a baseline of using that same software? A starting point or?
Yeah, we were able to work through certain kinds of issues that had vexed us for a while. Those latest versions of the ECLI software and some information on the ECLI website. Next clear, for instance, that for example, traffic on 91 doesn't count towards Brattleboro. It's outside the scope of what we would be measuring because of the challenge of actually measuring it. So even though a percentage of local traffic uses 91, what we would be doing is looking at equal miles traveled or other behavior on the local road network. Making assumptions about emissions. And then backtracking from that to figure out energy, which is, there's a standard formula for doing that. And then being able to identify improvements or identify progress towards a goal. So some of those sort of issues that had vexed us earlier on to some extent have been resolved by looking at the latest material from ECLI.
So in all that, for instance, like, is there a way to know or to figure what, how much traffic is through traffic? Like it would be on 91 or is that not a factor that you're putting into? You just assume that's all local traffic or?
Oh, no. Well, no, you assume that everything on 91, effectively what you're doing is assuming that everything on 91 is not local traffic.
But I mean, like on Route 5?
Oh, so everything on Route 5?
Is local traffic.
Is local traffic, right. Which is also not true, so probably effectively cancel one, cancel the other.
How great is that? What a coincidence.
Beautiful.
And are there any other issues that you guys are wrestling with in the Energy Working Group?
No, no, that covers most of it, I think. I think, I think this allows us to move on. The other thing that we clarified with the working group was remembering that it's a key chapter, but that depending on the goal or actions that it might be energy related, but more likely turn up in a different chapter of the town plan. So for instance, things to do with land use that have an energy element to them, like a goal or a policy or an action step. It would be identified or noted as an energy chapter, but it would probably be found in that land after a longer discussion. And so people are comfortable with that way of allocating things as well.
Do you foresee that, so like if there is an item like that, for instance, if it's more heavily weighted towards land use, it would be mostly talked about in land use and?
Basically, what we're just, with the expectation is that there will be things between energy, natural resources, land use, economic development and transportation that will cross reference each other.
Anybody have any questions or comments though? So the process seems to be working.
The draft is coming up.
Any other meetings?
Did you announce Wednesday's meeting already?
Yes. Yeah, we talked about the three meetings, the three district meetings. Guess the next thing is select board presentation.
Did you want to kick this off?
So we are scheduled, the planning commission has time on the June 21st, select board agenda. Provide an update. They need it for 6:15. Yep. The agenda obviously isn't ready yet, so I don't know where to fall on the agenda. I'm not even sure of the better sense of the amount of time that we'll have. But I imagine it's fairly brief. We usually have a full agenda. We can provide them with materials in their packets beforehand, so. So it's kind of, it's in purpose for now is a discussion of what kind of materials do you want to present to the select board? So that we can have them prepared to be in their packets and then who will speak and whatnot. One of the things that I typed up for you to see if you think it's worthwhile, though God, and I think it's kind of dense, is kind of a snapshot of what I had updated, given to the citizens breakfast. So it's just a little chart. I didn't, I spoke to it. Citizens Breakfast. Kind of where we're at with the chapters. What are the key findings? What are the key concepts that are discussed in the chapter and what has the outreach been? Do you have enough copies for people in the public? I don't have enough for everybody that they can share. Do you want me to run some for you? That's okay, I'll run some.
So I think we should, while Susan said, I think we should I think we should assume somewhere between 15 and 20 minutes max before the board. I think that the quality of the information that we provide in their packets is going to have a strong influence on how it works. I would like it that the select board members read the materials provided in their packets and have time to ask questions. I'm concerned that over that period of time, one or two issues of clarification or interest on the part of one or two members of the select board could completely dominate the discussion and we wouldn't get a chance to convey you know, the overall scope of the project, you know, if you think about it as a project, the overall scope of what we have been doing, the record of what we've been doing. So I think there's some really important pieces of information that has to be included in the packet that goes to them that addresses that. But I just think that on the basis of five people hearing for probably the first time a presentation on the town plan, you know, it'll just feel, it'll, I'm sort of assuming that it's going to go off on a tangent. And I can't predict which tangent that will be. There's 360 possibilities, is what I'm thinking. So, without going into fractions. So we should try and think about that. And shape. You know, shape how we're going to present this. Not to avoid it, but to sort of expect it.
Were there questions at the citizens breakfast that maybe gave you clue? I mean, that's a whole different group than a select board.
Yeah, we make an assumption of it.
And that's very active, questioning.
Right, I don't know if it's going to do much of an overlap.
Well, no questions were topic specific?
Yeah.
Where the select board role in this, I think that they need to understand their role, so that needs to be communicated to them. Because there are some of the board members. You know, some of the things, I think, you know, the timeline, what their role will be.
So at the league, let's say. Go ahead. We're going to want to present some basics about, you know, the history of the effort of the project. Started with T-Peg and the Planning Commission and sort of the key groups and people that have been involved. And then how long it's been going on and things like that. And then the sort of the skeleton of the plan or?
To some extent, I think I think one of the key things we've met with I've met with one of the newer select board members. There's two select board members that I would regard as being familiar with the process just because of their background and their length of service. And I think there are two other select board members that are probably a little bit in the dark as to what's actually required here. I think from the standpoint of what we need to present to the select board, part of the packet needs to be very clear about what their obligation is. They have some obligation, a very specific role here. It's their job to adopt the plan and the, so they need to be very clear what they're going to do and what, you know, what their options are. The challenge here is to summarize the history of what we've been doing, summarize their role, and then summarize the substance in a way that over the space of 15 minutes gives them plenty of time to ask questions, which I'm hoping will probably be split between process role questions like what do you want us to do and when are we supposed to do it? And substantive questions about what the contents of any one chapter might be. So I think that's our challenge, is to actually find a balance between those three things.
So something like an update of this?
Yeah.
That's maybe with timelines?
Right.
Maybe that's something like that.
There's a lot of minutia, what they might refer, what they might regard as minutia, which is that we've had several debates now, or not debates, and we've developed a template or a format for each chapter and that's changed over time. They might, they might regard that as too much information. On the other hand, it's important to convey to them that we've got a process in place that addresses everything from that to much bigger questions. And I think that the things that we need to forebrand include the public participation component, which is comprehensive.
So will some of this be education for them, like giving them what the goals are, what the different elements are and?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, and you know, for instance, that you've settled on a really difficult aspect of it, which is we're not free to make up our own goals and elements. We have given the goals and elements to respond to, so they need to know that.
They need to know that.
They need to know that.
Yeah.
Exactly, so that gets back to the whole question of process and roles. And so I think that we can convey a fair amount of information in the packet and hopefully not have it too dense. And if we then get questions from them about that, that's probably easier to handle than trying to explain it to them verbally from the get-go as part of the presentation, because you can spend way more than 15 minutes just on that aspect alone.
Look at that, I mean, this is obviously very dense and I'm just drafting my notes. Maybe I'll see some type of it. Do you, uh, do you think, is this something, could the planning commission submit to the select board, like, work as they go along but not give it to them?
Yes, you can do that.
Like, this could be as a follow-up, like, not, you know, maybe have this on hand so that any of you could answer questions about it, but then submit it to them after the fact so that this initial update with them doesn't get bogged down in the initial of the chapters? Can the planning commission get first on this?
But I think it, I've been thinking something along those lines, which is that this might be a good moment to actually start fairly regular communication with the select board. We have to figure out, I mean, the minutes are available for them to read. And they're online and all that kind of stuff, and they receive meeting notices and so forth, so they're aware of the agenda and so on and so forth. But it's a little bit different from handing them something that summarizes where we've been at for some set period of time. So not even necessarily to every meeting, but perhaps once a month or something. Something that's conveyed to them, you know, as a document that just summarizes.
So this first initial meeting, are you? So this first initial meeting, are you, um, is going to include in the packet any drafts of chapters or not at this time? This is just information, education and
Yeah.
the bigger picture overview and what's expected, what's been given to us to do, what's their role is?
Yeah, that, I think at this point, that might be too much information and then later, if they've got interest in substantive sections of the plan, then. And I said, we think at a point where we have a, a working draft of the complete document, which is when you as commissioners and us as staff are really reviewing the text pretty closely. It would be effective to make sure that they have copies of the same thing with the proviso that they definitely know it's really draft.
Well, you know, I, one of the questions I have about this is, is, is one of the purposes to kind of, you know, sort of feel around about how the process is going to go when you're out, you know? When I look ahead to that in August or whatever it is. Seems like it could go on for a long time and they're not going to want it to go on for a long time. I wouldn't imagine practically speaking that it could. But where, what, what is the process there, you know? And I, you know, I wonder if there's, if this might be, uh, I don't know if this time is the time to do it, but is there a, a way to kind of bring that subject up and see how they would intend to go about that, you know?
Yeah, I think we need to familiarize them with the requirement and the statute that the planning commission will hold. A public, two public hearings and then one public hearing, at least one. And we, I think we have probably figured we wouldn't get away with one. And then they hold, they're required to hold two as part of their adoption process. So, once the planning commission, so in terms of the steps that we go through, once the planning commission has resolved that they, that you liked the draft, that's the moment it will shoot. Schedule, well, you know, one or more public hearings. And the planning commission would then, assuming that everything remained happy, approve that draft of the town plan. And then you forward that document to the select board, who are then under statute are required to two public hearings duly warned. And then subsequent to the closing, seven public hearing, which could be the same night, vote on the adoption of the town plan. They can adopt it as they find it, they can adopt it with minor recommendations or amendments, or they can hand it back to the planning commission and say, we think there are major differences between us and you. And that would then trigger the planning commission having to schedule more work, more public hearings and working over those differences. And then it would get approved again, go back to the select board. They would make a decision through public hearings as to whether it met what they're expecting. We are hoping for one or maybe two public hearings from the planning commission, the planning commission approves the draft. The draft goes forward to the select board, they hold two public hearings and choose to adopt the town plan as they find it. And that, that's the end of the process. The local case to be aware of is the contentious, um, Delston plan.
Can we go back to Carolyn's comment about goals? Does the select board set the goals?
No. Ironically, it's, well, it's not that ironic, but the state says, in, in chapter one seventeen in the statute, there are goals and elements which a town plan must respond to, including down, going down in detail, um, requiring maps or responses to certain kinds of things that are explicitly listed in the statute. And so, really, when you look at the contents page for the town plan, really, almost every chapter is a goal requirement from the statute. So there's a pretty close parallel between what the statute is asking us to do and what our response is.
So that would also be the type of thing that you'd want to remind the select board is?
Yes. And I think that the newer members of the select board are probably going to find that part the most challenging to, um, understand the implications of.
Like the newer members of the planning commission.
Yeah, once your third or fourth one's done, if, you know, it doesn't.
I mean, it's pretty much of a new process to everybody, so.
Right.
Says a bit of.
I'm still not, yeah, actually, is that true?
Well, so would you envision seeing a, having a, you know, a periodic, um, we really have a few months between now and then. But a periodic, uh, status report, you know?
Right.
This chapter is, is a second draft and we're, you know, and this is what's happened so far. Something simple, not dense.
Right.
But, uh.
Right. I think we're surprisingly close to being able to say, that we've got a handful of chapters that reach that level.
Yeah.
You know? And then there'll be another set that are a little, that are, you know, in train right now and are maybe denser, things that they may not get, but will come later, will be the appendices and so forth. Okay, which may help them. So, and then, and they need to understand that, but I think that, even if you look at Sue's list here, I mean, most of those chapters are pretty close, I would say, to being able to sort of ship out to them as a, um, as an indication of where we're at.
These four on this overview sheet.
Yeah. And then energy and transportation are pretty close. And that leaves a couple of others, municipal services, I think we could probably get in check pretty quickly.
So those are, um, things you see as future meetings with them so that we can present that stuff to them a little bit on the drafts to get a little feedback would be?
Not necessarily me, I would just, I, I think one of the things that I've observed with some select boards and planning commissions in other towns where there's a really, um, tight connection is, planning commission is having a pretty well configured work plan and then sending copies of their product, if you like, onto the select board so the select board has some awareness of what the planning commission is up to. So, without necessarily having to be before them in person to talk about it. And then certainly, I guess, if they wanted to talk to you about it, they could ask somebody to turn up at a meeting or something or just. Ask.
But, but is that what we're talking about doing?
Yeah, confused.
I, I, I'm saying, I'm saying that once you had this meeting with the select board in, on June and June, that subsequent to that, as chapters kind of get to the point where we're pretty comfortable with their, with their state, you know, their status is a close to final draft, then I don't have a problem sending it forward to the select board for their information, but not, but not expecting to turn up and discuss it at a meeting, just sending it forward.
I'm concerned about the meeting when the planning commission meets with the development review board. How long will that take?
We have not actually discussed that, that's a, um, something that I have been a little vexed by also, thinking about in the back of my head. We have down, that we typically meet with them once a year to deal with practical kind of housekeeping issues. Things that they've noticed about the ordinance or we've noticed about the ordinance or some regulatory change that, that means that we have to change language, which means that they need to be aware of that language change and what the implications for them are. There is a view, um, that the development review board does not engage in policymaking around land use that it implements. And so, following from that, I'm overstating a little bit, but it goes something like, so you just give us the rules, the rule book, and we'll, we'll do the implementation, but we don't have an interest formally in dropping the rules.
And then is there another school that says they're the ones that sees what's happening on the ground and they know the trends? And so they report to the planning commission of what those real life situations are so that when you're revising the land use section or you're setting the tone for ultimately changing the zoning, you need to know what those issues are?
Yeah, to some extent, those covered in the housekeeping annual, annual get together meeting to some extent and it goes that broad to some extent. I think, I think we're writing the plan and we're writing, we're, we're writing the land use, the land use chapter and other parts of the plan as if we need to change things. We're certainly very aware of their general view about the, about life with the current subdivision and regulations and zoning ordinance. That would like me once.
And so you don't need to have this meeting with the development review board before the master plan is done because you know it?
It's definitely not a statutory requirement. And, you know, I think, like, I think we'd be interested in getting a comment on anything that we were proposing, but we're actually also not proposing explicit changes to the subdivision regulations or the zoning ordinance in, in an explicit way. What we're saying is there are certain aspects of those things that we intend to change. And both those documents are up for a rewrite since the town plan is completed.
You know, the, the last time that we had, we didn't have, we did it last year, we had one before.
Right.
And, um, it seemed like we all envisioned that those meetings would happen in July or August, something like that. And, um, uh, I think we should probably sit down pretty soon, three of us at least, and talk about our schedules going out because, I mean, just hearing you ask that question was, makes me think, yeah, if we do that in a meeting in July, I, I just, I, I'm not sure that we can get everything done that we have to do to get to the select board by August, you know? For example, you know, it seemed like it would be more like September or something like that, but we should probably look at the reality of that and see if, see where we're at, you know?
My question was really just if that's something that had to happen before you finish the land use section and then you'd want to do that with, meet with them?
Yes.
And then send that to the select board?
I think, yeah, I think you raise a really good point and I think that one of the things that we should do is think about scheduling a, a meeting with the D O V once we've got an early draft of the land use chapter ready for outside comment.
Well, let's, let's sit down for a second.
Yeah, alright.
We didn't do that in our meeting with them last year.
No.
So it'd be good to be sure we get it in.
Well, the reason why we had some scheduling issues and then we had, have had such a low level of activity, that there wasn't anything egregious or difficult, I mean, they were not bringing out new things. So, I mean, we checked in with them and we didn't really get along with, whereas previous year we had a, a pretty long laundry list of small things to fix and change and so forth.
We do know some of the big things they want fixed.
Yeah.
Like they'd like to see changes to the regulations.
Right.
Because we have some of the larger things in the past too.
Right.
We also need to remember to, um, schedule our kind of first meeting of our new year with new members and whatnot and
Yeah.
that piece has to be in there, kind of, let, let that go in the past too, so that would be nice to.
Okay, so we're, um, to talk about the select board presentation anymore, um.
Do you want, I pulled together some materials that I thought would be good, we can include them in your next packet to, or and talk about it with the next materials for the select board, you mean?
So the things that, if I could just draw some attention to, the kind of things that people need to think about right now before we leave this topic, it would be zeroing in on the fifteen to twenty minute timeline, the way we're going to present this stuff. And I think brevity is critical. So, then it's a question of who's going to do the presenting and which parts. And then, um, I think for the sake of encouraging everyone getting able to follow along, we need to with a, uh, faraway PowerPoint presentation. But it needs to be pretty, um, accessible and easily followed. I think we've got some really good feedback on the presentation that we put together for the rural commercial adoption. I can't remember what the secret there was, but, um, we'll see. So.
Pictures as well as data?
I wasn't going to say that.
Persistence, I think, is what it was.
Just exhaustion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, I, I, I want to start spending quite a bit of time working on that over the next couple of weeks, which is stressful, but, um.
Well, you know, it seems like if there was one question that they all might have is where you're at.
Yeah.
Where you're at, you know, like, how far, how long will this take, how long will that take? When people on the select board want to know stuff, if I see them, that's what they say. So, you know, a, a, a simple summary of that, even though that doesn't
Right.
capture anything.
No.
Alls it does is say, this is where we're at, because, you know, they're obviously not aware that we've been at this for a lot of time.
Right. Yeah, we can do that.
I think also they really need to know the kind of public
Yes.
Yeah.
Outreach that we've done, both in big meetings with consultants, just yourselves, and that the different commissions have done and then the small group meetings that we've had too. I think all of that would be really important, so.
I'd like to have that as background material to get in touch.
So, was there anything else that you had around it as far as that?
No.
Things to think about?
Just need to do.
Okay. We'll talk. Alright, well, we, that brings us to chapter review. And I think we'll do arts and culture first, how about that? So we don't have our usual theater in the round setup here, but, uh, as we're, we're going to start this discussion and as, as people want to chime in, I will ask you to step up to the mic and give your name and where you're from and we'll go like that. So, it'll probably take about, um, thirty-five minutes for arts and culture and then the last half hour for transportation and so. And I think, Sue, do you want to give us a sort of a prefrontal group of hits and highlights?
Sure. Well, I tried to format this in the new format, so there's an introduction, um, we don't have the trend section anymore and then the vision has been removed because we have a single vision at the beginning of the plan. Worked some of the issues into it. So a lot of the, um, goals and policies and actions came from the town arts committee. They gathered information through the short process. I tried to be, we had asked, at that time they had formatted it in objectives, but last meeting we moved to policies, so sometimes I had to kind of rework the wording to make it more of a policy than an objective. But I tried to keep it to, they identified five key aspects that they're working with that are economic development, accessibility, administrative structure, public art and information sharing. So, um, the way the chapter works is just kind of the, let's do the current conditions. And then what are the needs and identifying the gaps. And then there'll be a separate standalone appendix that's more of the inventory of what we have here. It'll be kind of subject to a few correctors.
We want to start from that end down there, Carolina, do you want?
I only got my packet today from the mail, so I haven't completely read it in depth, so go the other way. Please.
How about we start it?
I've been reading the notes from the emails.
Well, it seemed very comprehensive. The only thing that I was wondering in looking at this green list was that it was supposed, it needs to improve historic resources, and I don't know how much detail it will improve historic resources.
At one point we talked about taking historic resources out and maybe putting it with scenic resources. And so that's when I first started working with this chapter, it was separated. Or so it was in my mind that it wasn't going to be in this chapter. So I think that we kind of fit it into this chapter, I think we need to.
Well, I don't have a, I mean, I think it might be nice that scenic resources be, you know, because then it could include like a map of where the points of interest are of historic and scenic.
Do you think it would be better with scenic resources?
Yes, it would.
Yeah. Is that the way?
That's what we have.
Yeah, I think that's the way we had it fallen out before.
So in the value, in the value statement, we would take historic out there, but culturally.
Oh, right. It's not that we don't, but it's just that it's somewhere else, alright?
Right.
Yes, it has to just be included.
Anything else, Liz?
No, thank you.
I have nothing significant to add or take away, I thought it was pretty good.
I had a few notes. One was that historic part. And so that includes architecture as well, this was a question.
Yep.
Boy, okay, so that's that.
Yeah, I mean, that's just one of those challenges.
Okay. So under policy five, and this was, that lines up with the but, you know, under number two.
Got it, John.
Well, these policies and goals don't, they don't line up, right? That's, they're not intended to line up anyway.
No, they line up better, I think, in this chapter than, than the previous chapters we looked at.
The way the arts committee presented their information, actually, did line up.
Line up, meaning the policies correspond with the goals, yeah, for the most part, yes.
Well, I guess the accessibility part, so it seemed to me, and I know it's mentioned further along, that like in policy five, it says, address the economic, social, cultural, educational, and age-related reasons that limit accessibility to the arts of Brattleboro. But was there going to be something about physical limitations as well, or physical accessibility, actually?
The planning commission had talked about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
And is that something that we should put in that? That, oh, yeah. I just wasn't sure if that was the accessibility we were talking about, or.
I think initially it started off as a kind of a relevancy slash you know, how not, not a physical, not a physical disability barrier to accessing the arts so much as a more complex social and cultural and economic barrier to participation and accessibility, yes.
Well, it would be my opinion to have a physical issue, because it's one of the accessibility issues, I guess, I would say.
Right.
And you do, and people do notice that, of course.
Yeah, they do, yeah, they do.
Another thing was, I just, there was never any, I don't know what the place I believe is, street that's now a place for Dave Parker's place, the studios, the video spaces, stuff like that. I don't know if that would be, I didn't see it mentioned here at all, and I just have, I'm a little aware of it. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's unique in Brattleboro or not, I know that's one of those things that might be an example of something that's going on that's headed into the action.
Isn't it in a similar category, is Cotton Mill Hill though?
In what sense?
Well, that reuse of a building into, into art and creative uses.
Well, what I'd say about Cotton Mill Hill is that it didn't, it's not expressly, it's not part of the mission statement that B D C C to have Cotton Mill Hill occupied by artisans and artists. It just turns out that a lot of their tenants are. I don't really know how Mr. Parker has structured that studio space.
It's not just artists, I know there's a
Right.
a tourist group that's there.
Right, so I think what I'd say there is that it's almost some variant on the other gallery space and studio space that's available in town. I mean, it's, I don't want to, I'm not aware, for instance, that it's structured as an off-for-profit or anything like that. My understanding is that it's
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
I've just become a little aware of it and thought it would be an example possibly.
He owns, he owns his own studio there, it's been open a couple of times during gallery walk, and then he's advertised it for rental space, I think he offered that there could be gallery space on the first floor for people doing gallery, all kind of things. So, I mean, it was intended for artists, but I think it's not been entirely rented just by artists per se. But he owns the build, it's his, it's his thing.
Right.
Unless, I mean, if you guys know anything different.
It's basically arts, artists and craftsmen in there.
Right, I guess I was wondering if we could call it out as something that's happening that's, that adds to the, the local scene, you know? But, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's a sort of a level of detail thing, right?
I'm, I just, alright.
Let me think about it.
Okay, well, that's all I had.
Alright.
What question? On page five, that second paragraph that talks about the talks about the arts for, at school, for building skills for kids. And I was wondering if there's any, like, I don't know, persuasion power for this kind of thing for the school boards and stuff, other than we just put it into the town plan that it's something that we encourage, and that's kind of, that's kind of that, that really interact with the school board.
The town plan, I mean, ideally, we'd love for the school boards to be invested, they were involved with the education, writing the education chapter, and I know the town arts committee has, I think, spoke with the town school district about arts education, basically. So, does it have the force of law with the school district? No. But, you know, we can express the community sentiment.
Shows, shows what we encourage with the community. By only the, kind of, just that the appendix, arts and literary culture is really good, I'm gonna use this as a, as a kind of sales sheet for family and friends for getting to come and visit here and move here.
Well, this, in full disclosure, this is in the existing town plan.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I didn't write this, I tweaked some of it, and I, and the emails that you've got, there's
I haven't ever looked at this before, it's good.
The inventory is, is a lot of how the current chapter reads, so we tried to move it away from just an inventory to where, how can we build them?
I have a note on my
Thanks.
On my, one of the other meetings we had around arts, not to go back to Liz's question about the historical stuff, I have things that says include library and historic society schools, question mark, so I'm not sure what, because the historic society, I mean, their, part of their office is here, but they also have a whole room in the library, and will we put that in, or, I mean, it just goes back to the question of where's that gonna go, and I guess reading that note, I'm like,
I'll probably put that into the inventory, because we list other museums, Brattleboro Museum and Art Center, and so probably mention the historical society, because they, they're not really a museum, but they're, they've got
They've got a, they've got a collection, I mean, they've got a, they've got a museum. They've got a collection, I mean, it's not arranged as a museum, but they certainly, it's the word, curate a collection.
So in addition to what it says about the historical society, you put something about their place in the library as well?
Yeah.
Well, you're also, you were saying about the library as a separate
As a separate entity.
entity, as part of the cultural, right? As being a port of cultural resource, I mean.
Yeah, it's sort of, again, that question for me, and I mean, we took it out of the Brattleboro, took the historic out of the value statement, but then I thought I was clear on that, but then as I look at this note from previous, I was like, hmm. So where are we actually gonna put that historic, this society stuff in historic buildings, like the forget the name of the building, it's in West Brattleboro, they have a red
Oh, that'll be in the historic, those kind of buildings.
So that'll, there is a place for all that.
Right. Right, so yeah, it's a good reminder that we're just gonna have to decide which side
Yes.
goes to.
And Arlene Disler had recommended, I think in the inventory, including a subtitle literary arts, so we could actually mention the library as we, as we stay.
Yeah, I mean, we have a lockup, Kipning's, yeah, those are, that'll be historic. And that's, you know, and I guess in the West Brattleboro Historical Building, there's, right, at the current moment, there's the Tasha Tudor Museum is there temporarily till they but that's pretty, it's pretty interesting, very, very multimodal exhibit there. Brings people into town who are Tasha Tudor fans.
And we, and we have literary festivals here as well, so.
Yeah. I think it was, I really liked the way are we looking at how we want the chapters to look, just really, it obviously made much more sense in reading through this and looking at this. It's great, thank you.
Yeah, it does, it holds together really well. It's sort of good to have the policies and actions up front and people to be able to pick up.
Yes.
You know, do what we're up to.
I really like getting rid of the trends, to be, I think it makes the chapter a little less clunky.
Yeah, totally.
And some of them work their way in.
And you mentioned this earlier, so is it possible to always have the policies refer back to the goals and put them in that order, or is that always not quite possible?
It's not always quite possible, because a lot of times the policy will need a couple different goals.
Yeah.
Okay, well, how about if we make some color, have it now then?
Kate Anderson, Brattleboro, and I'm chair of the town arts committee. First thing I want to say is that this is just excellent work from our point of view, and the town arts committee wants to express just real appreciation for the way you've worked with us and integrated the data that we've given you and the suggestions and notes and input, and how you managed to integrate that into a set formula from, for a town plan is, is, it's awesome, and we're just wanted to ensure that we've made that clear, that we appreciate that. I have a couple of questions, I guess, I sent in some details, but these are more questions. It's, in the value statement, we we're wondering if it is apparent to everyone that there is an emphasis on sustaining what's already here. It has a very clear statement to support creating the environment for artistic endeavors, but there, there is so much here, and it just, it feels to some of us as if there might, there could be a focus on that. Another question, in the, in the previous town plan, it was suggested that a portion of the one percent room and meals tax, that that could be addressed as the start of a fund for to be, to be administered by the town arts committee for arts endeavors for the town. And we were wondering if if it would be possible to address that in some way in the current conditions section. Another question I have is, in the appendix, there are details that probably can be updated. Do you want someone to come in and just sit down and, I mean, there's, that would be great. Good, okay, okay, for instance, the circus center would, you know, as I mentioned in my email, they, they would really appreciate that becoming part of the performance lexicon and that, just that sort of stuff, so there's, there's a lot of it, it's, it's just detailed work. Now, the cotton mill is, it wasn't designed to be necessarily to be so full of artists and creative workers. It is, there is identified in the charrette a need for networking and for information sharing, and part of that is just a physical need to be able to enable and enhance the interaction between the workers at the cotton mill and then the, the workers downtown. So, anything from business mentoring to legal mentoring. What doesn't, what's difficult is just the physical situation there and the lack of proximity. So my question is, if that's not addressed in the town plan, and then over the next five years or so, someone comes up with, with some adaptable plan, is it, is it more or less not encouraged because it's not in the town plan? Did that make sense?
Yeah.
Very backwards question.
Somebody took a building and converted it to arts endeavors, but we didn't foresee that happening.
Right.
Would there be a problem with that?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
No.
Okay, very good.
Or are you talking more about a specific thing to improve connectivity with cotton mill, like an actual physical plan, like they could watch a show?
Yeah, like, or a podcast, or, yeah, that's really more what I'm talking about. And if it's not in the, if it's not outlined as a need for the arts and creative industries, is, would that be then something that we would say, well, we'll do that in the next five years, because?
No, I mean, that, there's nothing, the town plan is not a thing that would prohibit things like that from happening, or I mean, if, if it's something that we look ahead to and, and have a way by putting it down on paper of encouraging that to happen, great, you know? But this isn't gonna anticipate everything that could happen by any means.
Yeah, great, okay. Okay, and then back to the point that you brought up here of the accessibility addressing, physical needs and, and that. The, when we submitted our goals to you, that was part of it, so it is just included in that, but it's not to limit it to just physical
Sure.
accessibility.
Yeah.
Yours was, I think, a little bit more comprehensive initially?
Yeah, I think so.
Are you, would you like it to be more so again? Are you, would you like it to be more so again?
From the point of view of the Town Arts Committee, yes. But I understand that it has to align with the goals of the.
Well, it's important to the planning commission, it's probably got, in my reworking of it, maybe got de-emphasized. Because it had, you had three action items for just accessibility. I mean, I'm looking at something that you gave us back in November, but.
So Kate, like, when you talked about the value statement, I mean, would it be the sort of thing like, in that sentence, the ability to create and sustain an environment of social vitality, is it that?
Yeah, it could be as simple as that. Because I think the rest of the draft does really address the idea of sustenance in many detailed ways. But it's important to acknowledge in the value statement of what we've got already.
I think I should have delete, create, and replace it with sustain and.
We just talked about that. I don't know if I would suggest that. Because, you know, because there is then the very much looking towards the future with the word create. And it does tap into that whole idea of creative industries, which is something that, quite frankly, the Arts Committee is pushing, that the town understands that it's not, we're not just talking about, you know, sort of the pure arts, we're talking about what they then inspire and enhance within the overall economy.
You might need to break down, have two sentences there.
And of course, we went through that purge of sustain, remember that?
Yes, I do remember that. I remember that.
Find and delete.
Right, right. So when, with the suggestion about the 1%, in current conditions, in municipal commitment, and in, the first sentence of that, of municipal commitment and the first sentence of investing in the future, if it's appropriate to put that in somehow, that it seems like that would be the logical place, maybe?
Can I ask you on that? Kate, has the Arts Committee formally developed that as a policy? And is the Select Board aware at this point, or is it something that you've discussed? But the Select Board, if you, if it, I guess, my question is, if it turned up in this document, would that be the first time the Select Board sees it? Right?
No, it is something that we, that is a policy of the Arts Committee. And it is something that we, in our annual report to the Select Board in January, we mentioned the idea of municipal support for the arts. And how we get to that is the question. But in the last town plan, it was in the, with the idea of a portion of the 1% going towards the arts.
So that's not happening now, but it's.
It's not happening now, it was suggested, yeah, exactly.
And would it be 0.75 of the 1% to children for it?
Yeah, 0.8.
Or 0.99?
0.9, yeah, somewhere along those lines.
Just 1%, yeah, okay.
Right. We'll take what we can get.
Okay.
Okay, again, thank you for the great, hard work.
Thanks, Kate.
Yeah, and for your work.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
To me, this is just a real great example of town committees working together, us them, and with public information, and really getting something that really works. I say hats off to you guys and to the office for getting that for us.
Anyone else like to speak to this? Arlene?
Arlene Disler, Rattleboro, thank you for great work. And thanks to the Town Arts Committee, which was, I think, in the previous town plan.
That suggestion.
There you go, we did it.
I'm wondering why the 1% of 1% would not go somewhere in that, in that number three, build and administrative and financial structure to support community on.
I'll get the goals.
Funded goals.
I think, I'll work it into an action step, under, yeah, under one of those.
I do think it'd be great to include physical, for your accessibility. There was a group of us actually who tried to get something happening at Hope and Dumb and then into some walls. But we're gonna try again. And there are some bits of information that imply that those walls might not be as impermeable as they seem. And I guess I would just further emphasize, I sent that email about literary arts, that it's a really important part of the Arts Committee.
So we would put that in under, in current conditions?
It's gonna be in the inventory.
Inventory.
Right, action would go there. Yeah.
So would the SOB have under, like, Dance Performance Museum, Literary Arts?
A literary festival could go there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Arlene.
I'm Ariel and Big Speed, also on the Town Arts Committee. And I want to thank the Special Planning Commission for their listening and their ability to hear and to work. And I think, I agree with you, it gives me heart and feelings to know that two committees within this town have worked so well together. I also am a real detail person, and I went through this item by item. And I think that while accepting the superb quality of this, for instance, our wonderful notches, it has the matte line. And I added in the margins all sorts of ideas that we could add to just line by line items to make this not only an A+ report, but maybe an A+ plus.
Did you send those, did you have those to share?
I would come in and speak with you specifically in this town plan.
I'm out Thursday and Friday of this week. Thursday and Friday of this week.
Well, I said enough competition.
No, I said you're saving up for transportation.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything else to add? I'll add my voice to, this is a great job and really a great example of cooperation and hanging in there to, for the really good finished product. Speaking of literary arts, so you're there. You're achieving. So any other comments or questions or things? Okay, great. Well, thanks. And thanks for the emails. You guys, and thanks for coming.
And thanks for sharing those emails with us to just get the looks to.
Okay, well, the next item on our agenda is to do a view of the transportation chapter. So do you wanna give us a little, or Rod?
I can give you, whose voice is this here? It's, yeah, it's, I don't think it's got a voice yet. I have been doing, we have both been, we have been actually bouncing this backwards and forwards from both the computers, I guess is the best way to say it. And I did some work on this somewhat hurriedly last week and then soon worked it out a little bit more. I don't think we discussed it at any length for some reason, I can't remember quite what the reason was. But when it came before you before, as a very basic outline, I don't think we spent too much time on it. And then since then, the legislature has passed H198, which is the complete streets legislation. And so that was sort of worthy of some information updating. Goal number two is my favorite. It's just, I think, pretty much captures the whole essence of the chapter. Just two.
If you add a TWO, I think.
I think it might have been better as TWO. Or TOO. So anyway, so we're working on that one. I just noticed that. So I think the key themes here are really trying to do a couple of things. First of all, acknowledge that the road and sidewalk infrastructure of the town that is town-operated and controlled is large and challenging to operate. And it's forever a financial challenge and a management challenge to, to just keep it together. And obviously, things like a bad winter, or a couple of bad winters in a row, or something along those lines can have a devastating impact over a five-year cycle in terms of maintenance programs and upgrades. So setting that aside, the other thing that I think is now much clearer than it was even five years ago, or, you know, when the last town plan was written, which is really the early 2000s, is that the commitment of the community and of federal and state regulators to multimodal transportation is much stronger. And I think that what we've tried to do here in this chapter is have the chapter reflect that. So there's quite a bit of attention to the different modes and how best to manage the coexistence of drivers, cyclists, public transit users, and pedestrians, sharing system. And if you complete streets, in many ways, makes that objective clearer. So apart from that, the only other big kind of realization that we had was that Rattleboro is situated where it is and the way it is. Topographically or geographically, there are squeeze points or neck downs on every major arterial road in Rattleboro. And they make life difficult for all surface transit users. So wherever you see challenges for cyclists and pedestrians, you actually also identify traffic challenges for drivers. So that would be Putney Road, just south and just north of the Veterans Bridge. It would be Route 142, south of town, between. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I couldn't remember, Morningside, Morningside, the Great Lakes Center. And Route 9, West Rattleboro, and various sort of sections along there. The big takeaway point for me over the weekend, sort of realizing that was that, you know, any kind of program of work that's designed to improve life for pedestrians and cyclists probably has the benefit of making life better for drivers as well. But you see the challenge because of the geographies. Basically, what's happening there is that somehow the road is being crushed between either roads, a waterway and a stone, you know, and a stone embankment or some other kind of physical impediment, which makes it extremely difficult to resolve, is what I say. So that's the challenge going forward, I think, if you're thinking about projects or programs of work that are really gonna address conditions. And then the only other thing that's not really discussed and is difficult at this point is to speculate on what the ongoing increased cost of transportation, what the impact of that is gonna be on usage patterns as a whole. At this point, do you have anything you want to add? I think we'd be happy to take comments.
That's basically kind of the current conditions, sort of what you're stating.
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't we start again like we did last time? Caroline, are you, you have stated?
It's a joke.
I guess, I just wasn't sure what the purpose of the introduction was. Would that be information that would go more on your current conditions? I just, I mean, looking at the agriculture one as a model, it just, and I couldn't remember what we had decided at that other working group meeting. I mean, it's all okay information, but is that where it goes?
Oh, it would probably go, it would probably go before the actual, before we go into the text. I mean, there's some formatting challenges. It'll probably be more like the arts one, so, yeah, the one page of the goals, policies and actions. And then it's kind of the start of that.
Yeah, I think it's more likely to turn up effectively at the end of the goals and policy section. So, yeah.
I think you have a little chart in there, bicycle access conditions on page three. But I remember we talked about this other times, when Dana was here, she was talking about the conditions of the different bicycle routes. But we did talk about, one of the goals or actions might be really taking an inventory of those all the different commuter routes into town, that people using bicycles, not use just those main ones. And I think you sort of have them outlined here under the access conditions. But do we really, I mean, to me, to really work on that, we would need to do like, you know, have somebody really out on the ground looking at what that all looks like.
If you look at.
And maybe some of that's the bicycle, there's a bicycle group.
If you look at policy three and then action, the action steps under that, but the people of 3.2 and 3.3, it gets at that, so.
You have a backup step to that, but you have to really do a, maybe inventory isn't the right word that I'm thinking of, but you have to kind of go out and do your reconnaissance.
I think that's what 3.2 would be. So that you would review, you would review roads so they meet certain kinds of access conditions and be acceptable as shared, shared, shared roads, streets or roads.
I think it's not, it would just assume that would happen.
I think varying that is that there will be a process of designating the streets. It would have to meet certain expectations before you, before you've got a path to the route system. And then it will be mass, that makes, I mean, in my mind, that's necessarily involved something like an inventory or an audit to ensure that the road meets certain kinds of, you know, standards, like.
But I still think that should be spelled out, that's all I'm saying. Just in my opinion.
So Rod, you're talking about something more like a map, a map route system.
Yeah, I think that I'm aware of other communities that have already moved sort of beyond the paint and map thing. So. So if you're, um, new to town or new to cycling and you wanted to get around, you would make, use a smartphone. And you could download, download a, um, an application, basically, that showed you how to get around, uh, town, on your device of choice.
I think I've never heard anybody say "application" before.
No, I'm sorry, app.
That's very formal of you.
No, no, it's very, um, so, yeah, I meant to say app.
I don't have it, so I don't know. I know what people mean when they say it, I guess.
So, um, so that you would then be able to sort of just, you know, probably crash into a tree looking at your cell phone. But at least it would tell you where you're supposed to be going. But you could also have a paper version. And so there are communities that are already sort of some way down, that have progressed towards this, I was gonna use that one.
And so what you're saying is, in order to make it onto that map,
Yeah.
you would have, we would proper and.
We would work with a bike pit coalition or something, so they would literally travel it and resolve issues to do with anything more serious than nasty dogs, I guess. So it'd be, um, the number of intersections of the surface or, you know, whether it's, whether it's an appropriate street. So for instance, you could establish that Wantis to Quit Avenue was a viable alternative to Putney Road. Except when you go past some people's houses.
Just flights of people.
You'd be, you'd be at risk. So, um, you know, something like that, right? So how would you be able to get, you know, from one part of town to another using alternative routes? And am I taking into consideration such things as gray? So, you know, you'd be looking, it could be a little bit challenging to be honest, that those kinds of things.
Somebody has put out a variety of walks in town.
Yes.
The Crosswalk Shield.
Yes, right. Yeah, and there's a tree walk. And there's, there's a variety of maps already in existence to do certain kind of things.
Stop building on Main Street, too. Or there was at one time.
Maybe, yes, pretty old, yeah. So that's what I had in mind. So the, the whole process to getting a street on the route would be that a map sit in, sit in, you know, state.
All right. Liz, do you have anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Caroline, there's, I forgot my wrong.
Yeah, no, that's right. I guess I just, I liked all that's there. It just seems like some of the policies are really more action steps than policies. Maybe again, this is just a rough, rough out kind of, I don't know.
It is kind of a rough out, and we kind of win that, yeah.
We went backwards and forward. Yeah, it's the eternal question, is that a policy I just wrote or is that an action step?
Yeah, I think there is room for.
Yeah, some refinement there.
Yeah, and refinement.
And the one that I, um, where is it? Worked policy five, worked closely with state and federal agencies and private operators to improve rail service to Rattleboro. I would span that to just be, um, or maybe it's different, that, that we just advocate that our state and federal legislators do all they can to, you know, support public transportation for our state and bicycles and incentives and whatnot. And to make that actually, that could be a, a policy or a goal in and of itself. I know the, um, people up in, um, White River Junction, the vital communities people have, have that, that's specifically one of their goals. And how they've worked across state lines to do that. So just a little expansion of that one. Follow on this moment.
Okay, thanks.
I really like the front page of the transportation map. Talks just something about bicycling, bus service, and rail and everything. They could, they could really cool if Rattleboro could get, become like a leader forerunner in the non-automated transport in New England and America. If we could get halfway to where the Indian nations were thirty years ago, maybe.
And that is a goal.
If that is a goal, yeah.
Be, be like Amsterdam in nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah.
I think the rest of the country thinks we are like Amsterdam.
Particularly in the clothing.
When, uh, Policy United talks about, uh, the maintained line striping program, doesn't exist by lane, by lanes and crosswalks and stuff. I was wondering if we could also draw, are we allowed to draw the lines to show people that, like, on the triangle and the roundabout, there's actually two lanes? Is that something that we could change the line? Is that, is that a bad thing you can bring up?
The state.
Is that the state? Well, and that brings up another question I have, which is, um.
There's, uh, there's so many variables associated with the roundabout, including what it's supposed to be called, that, um, the line striping issue still causes a lot of aggravation and consternation.
Are you saying that they're going around in circles?
Yes, I am. And we can never get them to resolve the conflict between the upright signs and what is painted on the road. So that's another eternal debate. And then you have to watch people drive through it, and that makes it even more.
It's dangerous to do it correctly.
That's, that's right. That's right.
It's a kind of terrorist organization, paint lines at nighttime on there.
I'm not insane.
Terrorism, I say.
Action, right.
That's right. Completely in jest, completely in jest. That actually, the, what I was talking about challenges to improving the bicycle facilities. I was assuming that maybe state highways that run through town, where the town probably not even allow the paint lines on there, are they?
Those comes with the state. Somewhat ironically, I would say the single biggest leap in, um, designated bike lanes happened with the repaving of Route five, in particular, the stretch on Putney Road. And much more consideration and real estate was given over to the bike lanes than certainly there was before. And I would expect that to continue, actually. And it's the state that is pushing that.
We won't talk about how people like it or not like it, but they did put it in there. They don't like, a lot of people still don't like it. That bike lane comes out kind of in the middle. There's a right-hand turn lane, then a bike lane, and then a travel lane. I've gotten feedback from a lot of bicycles, but they just don't like that at all. And yet, I guess that's the, the way the federal or state is going with that.
There's a design manual.
I have one little question here. The chart's on page four, the, um, it's got the, uh, two thousand nine small town cost per passenger, and then, uh,
Yeah, they do.
Tough to read. It looked to me like, I can't say which one, Rattleboro V line, and it looks like the, the, the sixth and the seventh one, or the seventh and eighth one, too. It looks like, so the cost per passenger were really actually good. Then it looks like on the boardings per hour, we're sort of more middling, as far as they're kind of connected. If you've got, I mean, well, it's like costs would go down if you have more passenger boardings. Anyways, it was an interesting chart.
Yeah, that's actually, I think, something that CRT is trying to explore with the feasibility. I mean, maybe you think, they think there's improvement, room for improvement with more headway, or less, less.
Less headway.
Less headway. I think, um, on the cost and the boardings, because you're right, if there's more boardings, the cost is.
It's not a one-for-one relationship, though. There's, there's some problems in there, but.
And, and infrastructure and everything, and even roads, that's what I'm trying to say. That, that was it, that was my.
I have one more, can I go back? Under, um, policy three, improved bicycle infrastructure, most of that's looking at the roadways, the actual, but part of bicycle infrastructure is providing places to store bikes for people at work places.
Yes.
And, and especially at the train station, again. So I guess that would be another thing to add in there. I'm looking back at the notes from the transportation meeting that was held that, that June.
I don't think I shared it with you, but I have a photo from somewhere in Scandinavia that has a parking lot roughly the size of the Hydroph lot, and instead of cars, the whole thing is quadrants. So at some point, I was gonna jokingly present that as.
Yes.
Hydroph circa twenty thirty. But, um, and it brings up a really crucial point that, um, particularly downtown, there's really limited, um, bicycle storage. And secure bicycle storage that's weatherproof. And, um,
There's more than there used to be.
Yes.
I won't say weatherproof, but there's, there's at least more. But I think something about that under, I don't know if that goes under infrastructure. I mean, that seems, it probably would go.
It would go.
And just so that there's a goal or a policy there that we're, we're looking to be sure that that gets included. Sorry, Gary.
So I just had a few things. You know, I mean, I, I would combine some of these policies, you know, like, you know, that.
Yeah, we would know that.
In the process. Handicap access, um, you know, we had people visiting us.
Right.
Talking about transportation, and that was a persistent theme.
Right.
And I didn't find it anyplace, so I'm.
No.
And, uh, I guess the, the, uh, I, I, this kiss and ride parking lot thing is kind of interesting. I don't know what that's all about, you know, but.
Probably displayed affection, would it?
Kiss and ride, all right, great. No, uh,
Is that just random, is that part of randomized? I'm not sure if he's supposed to be kissing, but.
I don't know, it's just a kiss and ride parking lot, so, um, uh, the intercity bus, um, I guess we, we don't have intercity bus now, right? Because they're not.
I suspect we don't.
Yeah, because they're not stopping on Putney Road anymore.
No.
Yeah. And I, and I know there's, I've, I've heard before, and I think in these, in our meetings, that, uh, the, like Greyhound is not wanting to go downtown to the, to the Transportation Center.
I did meet with the representative from Greyhound, and, um, there was, he was open to that idea.
Yeah.
But, um, the person you should know is that he, this system made it very clear that Greyhound was moving away from, um, commitments to property, you know, real property, real estate, as a bus depot or something similar. That they were, along with other bus, intercity bus companies, working towards a, um, curbside pickup and drop-off setting. And that a large, you know, increasing amount of their ticket sales are done online. Making it even less necessary for a, for a building or something similar. And under those conditions, these, you know, they are interested in establishing really easy in and out access. So a lot of it was open to using the Transportation Center as a, as a bus stop. They settled, um, on the, then under, there are negotiations with Fleming oil for the Shell site on Canal Street, up near the hospital. Which will allow relatively easy access for a bus and.
Riding off the highway, you mean?
Yeah. And twenty-four seven ticket sales from inside the store. So, taking, taking, taking those things together, I can see their business plan working that way. Um, we don't have, you know, basically, there isn't a twenty-four seven outlet anywhere near the Transportation Center that would fulfill that.
But the train station, neither.
I was, we, I pitched very strongly the connection with the train station. And he acknowledged that, but it's not, there's nothing twenty-four seven that would allow the same kind of, um, services that a passenger might want.
That's illogical.
Yeah.
I mean, in some cities, the trains and the buses are very adjacent or close together or the same.
But it does, you know, I would say almost straight away that if it wasn't stopped and well-lit and safe twenty-four seven, it makes it really challenging. And if you expect, uh, you know, a young single woman to catch a bus at five AM or nine o'clock at night, then you probably do want a setting where they can stand inside somewhere, like, get used to it and wait for the bus to come.
So the only other thing I wanted to bring up, you, in the introduction, there's, um, there is mention about freight and, uh, warehousing and stuff like that. And I didn't know if, uh, if any goals or policies, um, about that would be in order. You know, I mean, I'm thinking specifically of, uh, the, um, events from, uh, Beckman River. I'm trying to, to pass the, uh, zoning on Putney Road, and there was quite an uproar about that there could be a, um, a truck stop, so. And, you know, I, I mean, uh, the importance of freight moving to this area and the number of jobs that are presented and everything. I don't know, and I, this is really an open question. I don't know if there should be some kind of, um, making that kind of business easier to deal with. There's some things to be done. And I don't, we don't need to talk about it now, but I just, it's just a question. But that's part of transportation.
Right. I had been thinking about policies that would go with that, and I was thinking to some extent, aside from the one that you just raised, and I think it's an important one. And I was gonna frame that in terms of travel services and where they are located and how rational their location is given our other, given their land use and, uh, transportation network. So in other words, we encourage, or we allow for, I shouldn't say encourage, but we allow for travel services at exit one, and we allow for travel services and related activities around exit three. And we can find their expansion in rural commercial along Route nine consistently with community expectations. So if we feel, you know, so the first question for me, I think from a land use standpoint, rather than a transportation standpoint, is do we provide enough area for transportation services to exist in? And that's an open question, I'm not sure. I don't have a view on that answer. And then, do we have appropriate guidelines in place to get the transportation services that the community thinks is appropriate and, and wants? And remembering that transportation services here would include motels and hotels. And then, are they, are they accessible to all the segments of the, you know, road users or transportation users, including truck drivers? And then lastly, for warehousing and freight. Long term, I wish it wasn't long term, but I think it is long term. What is the interface between the rail mode and truck, um, mode? And can that be, can that interface be improved upon or made more clear or, um, further developed in a way that benefited the rail network? But also, that also in some ways preserved the road freight, um, sector here because we've made that interface more effective and more efficient. So here, what I'm trying to get at is the idea that in the long run, I'm expecting more things to end up on the railroad if things go well. And then getting them often on the railroad is gonna be key. And that could be a, done well, that could be a benefit to Rattleboro in terms of economic development and land use strategy. So we have to think about that. There are spurs for the railroad at, um, the existing railroad station now and also on, basically behind Agway and just north of Agway on Putney Road, that are pretty substantial. The control of those spurs and the condition that they're in and that kind of interface, if you like, between road freight and, and rail is, is not really clear, so.
So would you, um, look at that and see, I mean, if, if maybe there's some initiatives or some policies that you guys can generate that we could look at at a later date?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ames?
I usually restrain my editorial comment, my role's late, so I'll try to keep that. But I think in this Act two fifty having state where development has. But I think in this Act 250 having state where development has not had as much negative impact, in places like Brattleboro, we have lost as much of our historical character due to transportation planning as we have to anything else. I'm thinking of the lights downtown, I'm thinking of the covered bridge in west Brattleboro, the triangle, the rotary. No one really seems to like any of it that much. And I can't think of a reason we do it other than when other places do it. And that doesn't seem to be a sensible way to do things here because people come from other places to get here because it's nice. I just feel that part of our town plan on transportation should emphasize to a great extent the importance of preserving the historical character of the town. You know, it's one thing when you get something brand new like an interstate that maybe justifies losing huge swaths of land or really changing a character. But in my mind, we've not really moved forward in the last 15 years. And I have very fond memories of when I was a kid crossing the road to the bells or whatever, and it's all just gone. And it makes me sad to go back to the covered bridge now. You know, I'm sure many years ago, there were old timers who were sad about losing the cobblestone or the bright signals and I just think there are things of value to this place with such great history and such great architectural history and we should be careful. All, all our goals in this chapter are a lot of it, but we should be careful not to ignore what we could lose in, in the context of the changes.
No.
Liz?
Well, I just wanted to thank James for that thoughtful comment and I guess you could be considered an old timer now.
Oh. Oh, yes.
I have a couple of comments. First, I wondered whether we wanted somewhere in this chapter to link what we were discussing about roadways in the energy chapter, just so that we could cross-reference.
Yep.
And then, I'm used to seeing in master plans, some sort of map that has a classification of the different roadways.
Yep.
And I don't know if that'll tie into what Rod was saying about apps. I'm used to it for being the roadway portion of the plan says, this is a collector road, this is the back, this is the center.
There will be a transportation map that's included as part of the plan. It will most likely distinguish between state routes, state highways and the interstate and then local roads. I think it's fair to say that for the most part, the arterial routes in town are state highways. There are some other major-ish roads that are probably regarded somewhat by people like James in particular as unfortunate after his, I'm thinking here of Maple Street.
We're being people like James.
He'll be worldly kind, he can remember horse traffic and those kinds of things. Yeah, the thoughtful kind. So if we want, and I've got, you know, we have information in here that uses the standard state classification system of classes one through three.
Maybe just then a definition of what classes one, three are. I don't know. And then I was thinking, well, why did you need such a thing in these other master plans? And I think that they were linked to zoning and what type of access you can have off of a certain type of roadway. So if that's important to us, then we should have that.
We talked a little, a while ago, were we going to do that classification, that arterial cluster, that kind of stuff? And then we didn't really resolve it. It's kind of, my sense, I have not a whole lot of transportation planning, but it's not really been as big here, at least in this part of the state, as it's been, as it is in other parts. Very subtle, but the level of understanding at the state might be rose that way, but it's kind of.
It's, I mean, it's interesting that you bring it up because I know in more verban dense states, and I don't want to make a link between density and verbanity, but, so anyway. But you see much more attention to that and have got hierarchies in terms of, yeah, the frequent, if you're going to have a new subdivision, you know, if you have a long, if you have a long road that's currently got fields on both sides and then somebody comes along and proposes a series of subdivisions that would be built out fairly quickly, there's strong, there's more than guidance language, there are requirements that the frequency with, with G10 have an accessway onto a, a road of a certain classification, right? That's mostly addressed here probably through Act 250 and deals with the, you know, sort of the traffic engineering issues of sightlines and all that kind of stuff, which there is guidance language on it, it's quite explicit, but doesn't, in this state, it's never really broken out into road hierarchy, frequency of access, or those kinds of things, not that I'm familiar with. Although, in our work for this plan, reviewing town plans from Connecticut and Massachusetts and even New Hampshire, you'll see much more attention to that. And I think built into that is the experience of actual land development.
Development, I would imagine and shit in there.
Right. Yeah, I'm sure they've got it down.
Well, it's just a thought.
Yeah.
And then, you were talking about these squeeze points in town. Is there anything that, do you want to do anything about it?
Lots of them wrong. I'm sorry, no, James, I think now, no, 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 I take that back. I think we're going to preserve them pretty much as they are.
Historical squeeze points.
As features.
And then, I know you've talked about it in the past, that the, the select board is also road commissioners and they have a separate set of responsibilities. Do we need to say that in the plan so that the town, the people who read the plan know what various responsibilities are?
I think that's an important point that needs to be included in this chapter and I think it's also, I would like us to get sort of done with this chapter as a draft and hand it off to the select board for them to discuss and also have some background discussions with my colleagues from Public Works and other places so that there's, there's some time to sit with this and to really take it in. And contemplate the implications of this. Because I think the planning commission actually has a fairly constrained role here, given the division of labor.
And, and you can see that in the plan because there's, there's so much devoted to every other mode of transportation except road.
Yeah.
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 And one of the things that helps is that a lot of select board meetings and even our meetings, are people coming and complaining about pedestrian sidewalks and accessibility and, I mean, we've had it here, I've been at many select board meetings and that's there. There needs to be some kind of way to create something, you know, whether there's another citizen committee or whether the traffic committee, you know, again, because people said, how do we get sidewalks on, like from 142? And where pedestrians and people in the town, I mean, they'd like to see sidewalks or improved sidewalk conditions and yet the public works of the select board as road commissioners don't even go there. So how do we get a feedback system or a group that can work better together and?
And then lastly, I really liked the, the conversation from you and Gary about the freight, because I think that that is the future of, you know, transportation planning. And I know, I've seen a lot of other areas, the route to freight is having a renaissance. And I also think that there's a lot of room in that northern Putney Road area that could be devoted to that right by exit three. So, that's a good thing.
Yeah. There are some select boards who support that too, I know.
Just a quick, you know, the traffic safety committee is not in this at all. I, you know, I think we talked a little bit about it before, about would it be possible to expand the, the role of the traffic safety committee to include discussion of, you know, safe routes to school and all that stuff, you know, and sidewalk stuff and that, you know, I just want to bring it up as something that we talked about before a little bit.
Yeah, I'm glad to remind you.
Those people, as Caroline said, they don't, people don't know where to go.
Yeah.
And it turns up as something that people talk about as part of other meetings a lot, you know, as we know.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a, it's a die after eight and I would propose that we expand our time limit just a little bit and let our public speak to transportation. We have distinguished visitors here.
Maggie Martin-Hagan, Town Plan Advisory Group. And most of what the comments that I had or the thoughts I had around the transportation chapter were addressed by, you know, all of you. And I would just like to underscore James's comment, I guess I'm another one of those people that believe that once it's gone, it's gone and we really do need to preserve the character of the community and that's easy to overlook, I think, often when we're talking about the quickest way to get from here to there, so to speak. So I think that's an important element that maybe should, could be emphasized a little bit more in this chapter. And I'd also underscore Liz's comment about looking at energy because in the value statement in transportation, it does mention modes locally and regionally that have a certain environmental responsibility regarding or enhancing our quality of life. And I think definitely, energy aspects relate to that point that's being made in the value statement. And I, it'd be nice to see that maybe elaborated on somewhere in here, either as a policy or as an action. And again, following up on this last conversation about the, the select board being road commissioners, in contrast to the arts and culture chapter, which is really nicely done, very detailed and very, somewhat, I think, specific, if I'm reading it correctly, under the action steps where there are entities that are named. And I know when we were working throughout the year as a town plan advisory group, one of the things that we really kept coming back to was naming the entities in the action steps that are suggested as responsible for doing certain things and whether that could be addressed here in the transportation chapter, even if it says, you know, road commissioner, road commissioner, road commissioner, I don't know who else, at least somebody who is reading this would know, well, who do I go to, as you had just discussed, you know, who, who is the entity that has responsibility for this particular piece of this detail in the town plan? So those would just be observations based on, you know, my thoughts reading it and also your conversation. And thank you. This is, this is, you know, having worked on, grunging through a lot of this, I can really appreciate the effort that's, that's going into this with, from Rod and Sue and everyone else that's really contributed, so, thanks.
Thanks, nice.
I'm Molly Burke and I represent District Two in the Vermont House. I'm a member of the House Transportation Committee and I was recently appointed to the State Public Transit Advisory Council. And I want to say that bandages are not a result of a bicycle accident on Proppel Road in adequate infrastructure, but an encounter with my dermatologist paying for high school sun worshiping, so, with sunscreen. Okay, I just want to say that this is a really exciting document and I'm particularly excited because I was the lead sponsor of H198, the Complete Streets Bill, and to see it sort of enshrined here in the town plan is great. And just a couple of general comments. One of the things I want to say about that legislation is that it requires that states and municipalities consider the needs of all users of the system. It was very important in order, that this bill passed, that it was not a mandate, that the, neither the states nor the towns, the leader cities and towns wanted it to be a mandate. And they were able to get behind the legislation specifically because it means they just consider. But there is accountability and it has to be, there's going to be accountability on a state website that says, if they did not comply with the complete streets principles, why not? And there are, there are three, if you read the legislation, there are three outs that it was, the use was prohibited by law, for instance, on an interstate, you know, you can't have bicyclists or sidewalks, or that the, the cost was sort of prohibitive as to use, probable use, or that it was beyond the scope of a project. So there, there's accountability there and I think, you know, to Caroline's question about sidewalks in any new transportation project, then it needs to be considered. And if it's not, if it's not incorporated, then there has to be a reason why not. And I think, you know, the role of, of citizen action upfront can really make a big difference as to getting in, in the needs of all users in the project ahead of, you know, the planning. So, and, and I think the other thing about the complete streets legislation has to do with the fact that it touches not only on transportation, but it really touches on health issues, creating an infrastructure in which people can be healthy. We have the Commissioner of Health and the Attorney General, who's on in a sort of anti-obesity initiative, testify on behalf of the bill and the head of the Vermont Public Health Association because obesity is becoming such a huge problem. And also AARP Vermont was the chief sort of sponsor or, you know, sort of pushed behind this bill because a lot of elderly people are not wanting to drive, you were an Asian population and so just sort of bringing all those into context and all the help touch on transportation, health congestion, pollution, carbon emissions, health, you know, the whole thing. So I guess, you know, to be a little more specific, the goals to provide all transportation users a safe, efficient, attractive system and goal number two might be something like, you know, encourage multimodal transportation or something like that, you know, to, to sort of, I mean, we've had a real auto-centric kind of culture and I think that this, we're at a turning point now where people are starting to think in a whole different way. There's culture change going on. And, and I must say that, that culture change has really been very apparent in the agency of transportation with the, the coming of the new governor and appointment of new secretary and deputy secretary came into our committee and said, we want to promote public transit, bicycle, rail, while maintaining, you know, we need to maintain erosion bridges as well, the existing erosion bridges. And I think the cancellation of the CERC project, the circumfural, circum.
Yeah.
The CERC project in Burlington is sort of acknowledging that we can't be putting, there are limited resources that we have on new roadways, we need to really think really collaborative and creatively. So, anyway, so I don't know if there's some way in the goal to incorporate, you know, how you do the sidewalks. The House version of the transportation bill had a new sidewalk program with $200,000 allocated so that it would be an eligible project under, you know, the same as the class two roadway and the structures program that towns could apply for state grants to do sidewalks. However, once it got to the Senate, it got taken out. And that's how things go sometimes, but I think that will be back. I think that there's going to be an acknowledgement that, you know, the state standards for, I mean, the federal standards for sidewalks are very specific and, and costly for towns and if towns had access to other money, that would be great. So just, that's just a little note about that. And regarding the, the bicycle issues, I think, you know, huge issue is safety. And we can do a lot of legislation, we can do a lot of infrastructure, but how do we really, and I think a lot of it is education and how do we do that? I think, you know, the great opportunities for collaborating with Town Arts Committee, you know, just information and, and posters and just things, you know, about awareness, about safety. The B-line, I know that I've had a couple of people say to me, could we have the B-line go, I'm sure everybody's heard it, after hours, so that people could go to meetings, who need the B-line, who need that? And that's something that I, you know, also will be, want to talk with. And that's something that I, you know, also will be, want to talk with, um, the, the current people about that. And the, uh, the Greyhound service is really a huge thing. I took, I happened to be able to take a Greyhound bus from Uphealyer last May, leaving at noon or so and got into the railway about 3:30. And I checked out that service this year and it was gone. And then find out that the service was completely gone. And, you know, I'm wondering, there's, I was, I've just heard about it, maybe other people have heard about it. Well, of course, there's the Chinatown bus that, it's very cheap. It goes from Boston to New York, and a lot of students take it. Dartmouth has their version, goes to Boston, I think, New York. I think there's something that goes from Amherst. You know, there are other bus companies that are interested too. You know, I just think, I'm just throwing that out as an idea. And I know, I know people have been working really hard with Greyhound, and it sounds like that service will happen, at least today, anyway. Um, and I think, you know, all the other things about reducing private vehicle dependence, I, I think that will, you know, help a lot, you know, in terms of what James is talking about. Some things that, some things are beyond the town's control, like state mandates and federal mandates about how wide things have to be and all that. But, but I think it's a really important issue to think about aesthetics. And, you know, I think that, uh, not having to accommodate so many cars would, you know, help with that. I think that, that's all I have to say. And I'm just really pleased and thank you for all the hard work that you've done. And hopefully, we can sort of move ahead in a way that's creating a really better, better town and a more user-friendly town for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks for your work up, up in Uphealyer, Molly. It's great. Appreciate it. Who else?
I wonder if part of this chapter needs to be, I'm going to go back to that Traffic Safety Committee and the road commissioners, that if we need to ask if there's a new committee or commission that needs to be put forward that's more pedestrian bicycle friendly or even, I don't know, I have no idea. Maybe that's getting a little too complex, but.
You know, I need to explore.
Or explore. Use the word explore, the possibility of.
Yeah, well, and that, and that's what we were talking about, about the Traffic Safety Committee.
Yeah.
Maybe their purview could be included in that. I'm wondering.